Welcome to the study session of November twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. Danielle, will you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Blush?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Here.
Mayor Oniskel?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman is on Zoom.
Well, we see her.
I saw her for a minute.
Okay, I'll keep going. Councilmember Sap?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Thank you, Danielle.
You're welcome.
Tonight, Public Works Director Jay Harris has Capitol Project Manag- has Jay Harris and Capitol Project Manager Aaron Nix has some information for us regarding ADA transition plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, lady up there. Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So, the ADA transition plan, we're gonna present to you tonight what an ADA transition plan is, a complete version of it. And then, the second part of the report here is what we're working on right now. We're working on the right-of-way piece of it, which is the handicap ramps, sidewalks, that sort of thing. Push buttons on the little pedestrian signals, that sort of thing. So, we have a consultant currently working on that, but we wanted to take a step back here for a second, tell you what the full ADA transition plan is, and then what were the component of it that Public Works is working on right now. And Aaron, you're up.
So, I just did, so that the council knows, so that you have some background, the tendency with any type of ready agency in this state is that they feel like, because most folks are looking for money, especially when it comes to transportation stuff, they, they put these requirements on local jurisdictions, that they have to accomplish certain things. This is one of those certain things that we have to accomplish, and if we refuse or don't wanna do that, the reality is that this impacts our ability to get any type of state or federal funding. So, that's why most jurisdictions get in line and do what they're supposed to do with regard to this. This is one of those mandates. In essence, what the law says is that we have to show that we've been making progress by January one of two oh two four, uh, two oh two, excuse me, two oh two five. I've already, we've already accomplished that because we've already got on this, and we have a contractor in line and we're moving forward with it. So, that process has already been, we've already met that, but we just desire that eventually, within two thousand and twenty-five, we will complete this. So, what is the American with Disabilities Act? It was signed into law in nineteen ninety, provides civil rights protections for people with disabilities. It basically, it claims that facilities and services must be accessible to individuals with disabilities. It applies, in essence, I know that looks weird, but in essence, it applies to everything, in essence, before and after nineteen ninety. And then, the final piece, public agencies are responsible for these facilities and must develop an ADA transition plan. Paragraph following that, right, kinda goes into the law and discussion about that. We kinda, we obviously wanna make you aware of it. As Jay mentioned, we are focused right now just on the right-of-way. Technically, if you look into the law, it applies to any facility that we own. So, it could be the museum, it could be here, it could be any facility as well as the right-of-way. The right-of-way is a big enough chunk for us to bite off initially, and that's kinda why we're trying to piecemeal this a little bit. I did include an example of Wenatchee, the city of Wenatchee. They took the same approach, they just recently adopted theirs as well. So, we're gonna get into the elements of what an ADA transition plan includes. Predominantly, you're looking for blockages, or ways in which prevent people with handicaps from egressing, egressing along our right, our right-of-way. So, if a push button is too low, if there's a buckle in the curb, that's an obstacle. So, we have to identify those and put that into a plan, and we'll get into the next elements of what that entails. Next slide, please.
Yeah, so, George H.W. Bush, two thousand and ten, got a picture of him down at the bottom there, and you folks can read that, but pretty much, what at the end of this, you know, that every life is a miracle, and each person has something to contribute, will finish the job, i.e., we need to do a better job accommodating disabilities in, in the whole United States, whole community, right? And so, he did a good job with that. So, that's how a lot of these rules kept, I mean, obviously, the act was put in the, in the nineties. He was a big proponent of setting things forward, and basically, if you wanna get federal funding, you need to have a transition plan in place, and so, there's rule, rules coming down in place. And then, the two thousand and seventeen census, twelve point six people have some sort of disability over the age of fifteen. That's a large part of the population. Next slide.
We wanna just give you guys some examples of disabilities. I know you're smart people, and you know what those are, but I just kinda wanted to kinda demonstrate it and just show you. Things that impact your ability to move, diseases, diabetes, mental disorders as well, post-traumatic stress disorder, those types of things are things associated with ADA. It's not just somebody that can't see or can't walk, there are other disabilities associated with that that we need to be conscious of. Next slide.
So, elements of the ADA transition plans, our current focus, like we say, this is the right-of-way. We need to meet, watch out funding requirements. They said that you need to have a plan in place by the end of this year, or show that you're gonna be completing your plan. We're gonna be completing our plan, what do we estimate, maybe in February or something like that? So, we'll have a plan that is gonna be set in place, and we'll get more into what that plan has in it in a minute. But then, the remaining elements of the complete ADA transition plan for the city, you know, such as evaluation of all the parks, all the parks buildings, play structures, handicap parking out front, parking stalls for them, this building, our website, the elevator, I mean, it just goes on, and the bathroom, all the pole bars, the towel bars, the sinks, the customer service counter up top, I mean, it is a lot of things to look at. We'll be talking to a consultant about the next phase of this. We, we still need to figure out some budgeting for it. It wasn't in the two thousand and twenty-five budget, but I'd like to get started on at least getting a consultant looking at it, get us a proposal, and we'll probably include it in the two thousand and twenty-six budget, or maybe move it forward as a supplemental if, if council chooses, but that way we'll get our complete plan done. And then, so, right here, this came out of the nineteen ninety, so, the nineteen ninety, the whole act came out, Sheldon did their job. We went in and started evaluating facilities and doing things, and so, this is one of the checklists that I found in a directory for the Parks Department, where they're looking at all the different elements of, of the parks facilities in that instance. Next slide.
So, let's get into the meat of what an ADA transition is, and this is, this is brought directly from literature that the Federal Highway Post put out. In essence, an ADA transition plan identifies barriers to accessibility in pedestrian facilities. It also describes the methods that will be used to make the facilities accessible. It develops a scheduled methodology for removing barriers, and that is obviously a big point of contention, because that's money and those types of discussions, but that needs to be included. It identifies an official responsible for implementing the plan. In the past, we utilized our Human Resources Director, Manager, to fill that role. Currently, Leandra is our designated official, so that you guys know that. And probably the most important thing on any types of, these types of exercises is we need to solicit and incorporate public feedback. I will tell you, we are doing a, we're gonna be doing a flurry of announcements discussing this. We also built what we're gonna call an open house webpage. It basically goes through all of these details that we've discussed here. And then, what's really important with ADA, you'll hear this often, is they require and want, which I agree with, as much public input as you can get, and I think that's very important. We will probably have one or two, not necessarily a study session, but kind of an open house. We will also have that, that webpage that I'm talking to you about, kinda goes into all this, but then it offers the opportunity for people to give us specific examples of where they feel or think there's an obstacle, and that will be collected as part of this and go into the development of the plan. So, I think that's really important. You will find on anything that the state or feds do, public input is critical to everything. So, we actually have a plan to make that happen.
So, that picture down on the bottom left was chosen. So, the county goes in and does some courthouse improvements in the white building there. You can see a brand-new ramp, sidewalk hatching, and another new ramp on that side of the road. That allows people to walk between the county buildings on that side, but if you look off to the left, those curb cuts were never put in. That wasn't there, as a developer, they did their side of the street. So, there is, that's definitely gonna be in the transition plan, that where are the ADA ramps on the left side of the picture there? So, and then, the push button, it's amazing where these have gone, right? I mean, I'm used to just pressing a button, right? And, you know, they are highly interpreted now, and Aaron mentioned this to me, that at the crosswalk beacons, that it speaks in English and Spanish both.
And Spanish, it's really awesome. Yes.
And I don't know if all of us do that, and I don't know if that's in the transition plan, the dual-language thing?
We'll find out. We will find out. I did include that, we have to, more reporting, what we call Title Six, and it includes ADA, but also racism and all that other kind of stuff. I just completed our report, which was, for last year, which was over a hundred pages of things that we are proactively doing ourselves collectively, as far as getting information out, doing translation. We even have some staff that have helped us at some time to help with that translation, which I thought was really kinda cool, just to, to have that, that background and that ability to have a staff person communicate with somebody, a member of the public.
So, the most interesting thing that came out of that, though, is if you go to our website, go to the city webpage, go to like a project page or whatever page you wanna look at, if you go up, you'll see E-N on the upper right, that, that's English. Hit that little bar, and you can, was there probably fifty languages on there?
It translates the entire page.
And the website changes to whatever language you're in, which, thank you to Mary over there, that with the new website upgrade a couple of years ago, we do have that ability for people to look at that web content in, in their native language.
Mary, I would, I would think that maybe at one of our open houses that we have when we talk about this, that we might, I'm not saying, I'm not telling you to do this, or what I think we should do is maybe have some sort of informative piece to show people how to do the translation.
I didn't even know, to be honest with you, I didn't even know that was even up there. When you look at the webpage, it's just a little click thing up there, but I didn't know what that did.
Yeah.
And so...
And, and maybe it's just a couple, you know, sentences or something that just says, yeah, right on. Next slide, please.
So, some definitions, you got right-of-way, and then that's for public roads and streets. You have pedestrian facilities. So, you know, you have sidewalks, curb ramps, crosswalks, pedestrian signals, and we have a lot of multi-use paths around the city. And then, barriers are something that prevents unhindered travel along the pedestrian facility, cracked or uneven sidewalks, obstruction, missing substandard ramps, inaudible or substandard pedestrian signals. And then, this was another picture I chose, that you have that monster tree right there, beautiful tree, that's at Second and Pine. So, anyways, you see the sidewalk goes along the back, somebody's been maintaining that okay right there. I expected the sidewalk to be topsy-turvy and all that, but kept up on that, but you see there's no ramp right there at the bottom of the picture, and very minimal ramps going across. Then, well, the picture doesn't show up, and if you go across the street, there's no sidewalks or anything on the other side. So, anyways, that's going to be in the plan, I can guarantee you. And the ADA ramps or something like that, to go in and to take out, you know, those and redo them in a larger contract, they're going for about five to six thousand dollars a piece right now. They're very expensive. And so, you start adding that up for an intersection, and you're talking real money really fast. And next slide.
So, I wonder, we wanna put a slide in here of kind of specific issues that we feel that the council's gonna have to weigh in on, on this ahead of time, so that as we're going through this process, you have an opportunity to think about this a bit, and help us as staff implement the policy that we want. So, using current ADA and street standards, evaluate and inventory all pedestrian barriers, which includes identification of barriers and determine how each deficiency is repaired and the estimated costs. That is part of the plan that you're required to put in there. A prioritization of repair projects, also important. Funding plan and schedule to implement the right-of-way ADA transition plan projects. Again, very controversial and tough one, because, and you guys, I'm not, I'm not doing this to scare anybody, I'm just telling you kind of the factual of what's going on. The reality is that ADA has a tendency to change often, and often, what was acceptable ten years ago is not necessarily acceptable today. I just wanna give you an example, we've been scoping out our Olympic Highway project, and as I've walked through that, we've identified at least twenty-eight ramps that do not meet ADA, meaning those are gonna have to be replaced as part of our project. So, this is not small, this is a significant, I'll, I don't wanna call it a burden, because handicapped people are not a burden, but the reality is, is that financially, we have to figure out a way of how we're going to do that, and that goes into how we fund this in the future, those kinds of discussions. So, the fundamental question for you guys.
And that, it goes back to the Transportation Benefit District, that having street fund dollars to do these type of projects. You see at the bottom there, why the ramps are expensive, there's a lot of calculations and the exacting grades you need to meet there.
Slopes.
And slopes, yeah. And so, and then off to the right, you see that's called a tactile strip there. That's so, a person with visual impairments can see that they're entering a roadway, and then also the raised marker, the person with the cane can hit that, and they know that they're at an actual crossing or a ramp. You'll see a lot of older sidewalks that were built from maybe nineteen ninety to the early two thousands, look like a ramp, but the bottom of it is like just checkerbladed concrete, it doesn't have the tactile strip in there, so they're, they're not compliant. If they don't meet any of those slopes in that diagram to the left, the whole ramp's typically coming out, there's, you can't repair them typically.
And then, lastly, the most important thing, again, from my, I'm just emphasizing this, is discussions from the council with regard to public engagement activities, those types of things, through the plan development process, and what you guys would like to see. I've kinda given you some examples, so just some, some additional thoughts on that. So, those are the kind of things we, we're asking for the council to just start thinking about considering. Next slide, please.
Okay, so the inventory, so, we have forty-five miles of sidewalk. Staff had previously underestimated that length, and we came to you guys, what, two, three months ago for the contract change order to increase the...
March side, yeah.
The, the March side, yeah. So, we moved forward with more inventory, because we weren't up where we needed to be in just terms of total length. When we get done, we'll have all the sidewalks and ramps inventory. They're also going to give them as those locations in GIS, which we don't have a mapping layer in there yet for, so we'll be able to track in GIS when projects get completed moving forward. So, we know what we've done, and we know, more important than what we haven't done. So, a transport group has been walking, I think they're done walking the whole city, aren't they?
I think it's, oh, still walking.
Oh, they're still walking, okay. They're out there, you'll see some people wandering around with us on, you know, looking at sidewalks and measuring things and whatever. So, that's a transport group, they have inventory forms they complete, and then it goes into a database, that will go into GIS. And then, so we'll have that later this year with the interactive webpage. That, I don't think that's up and running yet, is it? It's, they're setting it up.
I've seen the, the draft version, the, the spadic version of it, or it's not live.
Okay. So, but we want the public to go do some outreach, so likely, the outreach is you live on a street, and you see a couple of the elements, you know, an ADA ramp or an offset sidewalk, or a tree right in the middle of the sidewalk, or whatever it all is, and you'll probably agree with those. You might also make some other statements, some things that maybe they didn't catch or, or whatever, or maybe you're really interested in that component and when it's gonna get fixed. So, sometimes, another city I worked for, we had sections of like one lot worth of sidewalk missing, that opens up like a block, right? Those are the type of easy wins that we're looking for out of this also. This city formerly didn't put as many sidewalks in, in the older neighborhoods. The last city I worked at, they had a lot of sidewalks, there was a lot of gaps. So, we'd go do what we call gap projects every year, and start opening up pedestrian networks. So, down at the bottom there, that's our Critical Pedestrian Route Math Plan. That is gonna actually be updated with the comprehensive plan that we're working on right now. Next slide.
As I mentioned before, part of this inventory process is to develop a project prioritization. I, I've identified some methods, and I believe Wenatchee did this, as far as kind of a one, two, three ranking. Priority one, obviously, being the most extreme, those are barriers that, of removal requests from, that we get from the public, and we do. Areas with high concentration of people with disabilities, if you can, if you can determine that. Areas with service such as schools, medical centers, government offices, and transit facilities. So, that's what you'd identify as kind of your priority one. You would base your funding and your timing of when you wanna do that based on how you establish that. So, priority two could be areas with medium concentration with, with people with disabilities, areas with services such as, services such as restaurants, shopping centers. And then, finally, priority three, areas with lower concentration of people with disabilities, industrial manufacturing areas, meaning that typically, those areas are not, pedestrians aren't moving around a lot in those kind of areas because they're industrial, and then of all other areas. So, that's what, we will be developing that as far as identifying how we categorize the priorities of the inventory work that they're doing right now.
So, I got an example of priority one, that I got a call, this was like eight years ago, that my son needs to get to the transit stop, he's in a wheelchair, I live up this address, and I'm having problems getting from A to B. We evaluated the barrier removal request and went in, and probably within three weeks, we had some, a ramp in, some sidewalk repaired, and a couple new pieces put in, and was able to get him to the, to the transit stop. So, we take that seriously when there are issues, you know, and we can accommodate that issue too, right? I, I mean, it's not like we put in a mile worth of sidewalk and a bunch of ramps and all that, that the fixes weren't, you know, extreme. It did take, you know, a few days with work to get it all done, but that was a really good priority one. The downtown street trees, because of the amount of pedestrian activity downtown, we're gonna be, it's pretty high priority, and the, the heaving of the sidewalks there, we're gonna be coming back in two weeks with a project update, that's gonna be in one of those updates. We'll show you some pictures of what we're doing, give you some timeframes of when that's going to be, that sort of thing.
Probably four or five projects will take you on in the next, please.
One question, when we have the priority two, we have areas of services, there's restaurants, shopping centers, sports, we're still talking about just city infrastructure, we're not talking about mandates to businesses already?
No, 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 no. This is specific to those types of areas, so in restaurant areas, you have a lot of circulation, that's, that's why.
Public infrastructure, what we're focused on here?
Correct.
That's what we're focused on now, as a private property owner, if you go in and spend more than fifty percent of the valuation on the building, you're required to upgrade it all to ADA. So, that would be that new stall, the van unloading zone, up to fifty cars in the parking lot, you have to put in a van stall.
There are cer- certain circumstances, the change of use or even building permits under fifty percent, because ADA doesn't have a threshold.
No.
That's right. It's, it's a requirement, and that's when we go in and we make sure that, we do an inspection for life safety, that's where you see the fire marshal go in and make sure that egress, fire extinguishers, exit signs and those things are, and also, and the building official go in and make sure that, you know, tall cabinets are fastened to the walls, that again, you've got, you've got your assembly spaces correctly spaced, and then ADA requirements are being met as well, particularly for egress and restrooms, those are the most important things.
Yeah, and that was some of the tenant improvements that have came in recently, where it wasn't a restaurant, but they're putting a restaurant in there, ADA typically kicks in. That's where you see the bathrooms are remodeled to be incorrect, doors are wider, that sort of thing. Also, like a low customer counter, so you can come up and pay the bill. A lot of, a lot of times, even the threshold, trying to get in the door is a huge problem, that you have to have certain door pull string, you can't have a huge ramp in, that sort of thing.
Lifts.
So, Google Maps at one time, I don't know if they sell that feature on there, you could rate the facility to the level of ADA accessibility. So, a person that wanted to go out on Friday night and was in a wheelchair or had a walker or whatever, can go and make sure that the bathrooms were available and that sort of thing. I don't know if they still have that option available there.
I know we have some businesses that have portable ramps that they pull out to, to get in the building.
Okay. Next slide.
Can I say something just quickly on this, this slide? You, you, so, methodology, in essence, what, what we're trying to do here with this slide is to kind of demonstrate to you as the council, the different types of city projects and programs that we currently are using or doing that might help us in this ADA realm. So, this is what we've identified.
Yeah, so, just to get into that, so, when we go do a street overlay project, we have to make sure that the, the handicap ramps are updated with the overlay project. Overlay is a, a new street, right? With chip seals, though, we don't have that requirement, it's a maintenance project, crack sealing, chip sealing, we don't, federal government doesn't require us to do ADA there. That with the capital improvement projects, typically, they're mostly involved paving and an overlay, so Olympic Highway North, all the ADA is gonna be done through the whole segment. So, a lot of the deficiencies in the report in the next few years on Olympic Highway are, are gonna be resolved. So, then, we, there's the transportation improvement projects, so that's external funding sources, that could be a grant program, like Olympic Highway is a grant project, that's one of them. Like what we did up on Capitol Hill, we would have put in ADA, but there was no sidewalks, it's an older neighborhood, there's no sidewalks or ramps anywhere up there, so it was good just to get the road paved and, you know, go from gravel to pavement. And then, private development is big, so they're doing a lot of frontage improvements, where a subdivision, you know, might back up to a roadway, they do what we call a half-street improvement, curb, sidewalk, ADA ramp, and then we usually make them do the ramps, the connecting ramps, you know, to get the people across, you know, to, to the other sidewalks in the area. So, with all those sources, you know, we're moving forward as we do projects, as the private developer does projects, we're gonna get quite a few things done, but we're going to have to do some planned projects also, especially later in this program, that we're gonna have to just go into a neighborhood and just take care of some things. You've probably seen that in other cities, where they've gone into older nineteen eighty's subdivisions, and went in and just went and spot fixed all the ramps, that sort of thing. We do have people in our maintenance division that are pretty good at concrete, they're pretty good at ramps, the ramps are very detailed, though, and so, we, you know, need to make sure, so our construction inspection department will come out and look at our guys doing work, and it's not good when it doesn't meet specifications, because it's, it's coming out. Whether it's a contractor or us, you have to meet these slope requirements and the tactile strip and all of that. So, as we move through this, you know, we're already doing a lot of it already, getting this plan in place, so, and knowing what the projects are, are so important, because right now, we don't have very good inventory, it's just, we, the project's going in over here, hey, fix these things. It'll be good to be proactive and, and know what all the upcoming projects are, and approximately what the costs are gonna be. Next slide.
Which goes into the schedule, you guys, and how we plan on, on doing this stuff in the future, and here are some of the things for consideration, I think I covered a lot of them. So, we do have the annual pavement maintenance program, which we could include components of removing some of those barriers as part of that process. A prioritized list of barrier removal projects, obviously, that's gonna, how many projects you have is gonna determine when and how you're going to complete them. Capital improvement and transportation improvement projects, again, trying to integrate that into maybe a capital project. into maybe a capital project that is trying to fix the roadway. We also fix the ADA ramp problem at that time with that. And then the most obvious is the available funding and grant opportunities. I will tell you, obviously, we are limited, and obviously city funding, there are grant opportunities out there, federal government as well. You kind of have to weigh those. The reality in getting federal money is it is extremely difficult, and it takes a lot of time and resources to do that. So not that we don't, that we shy away from that, I'm just saying that there are, there are extremalities that you have to take into account when you're going out with those kinds of resources. So I think that's really what we have.
Yeah, I wanted to mention one other thing. So we get complaints about private property owners and sidewalks being lifted. The city keeps the downtown sidewalks repaired in the, in the commercial district here, but residential house lifted sidewalk, usually because of a tree. And the current municipal code says that that property owner is responsible to repair the walk, and it gets expensive quick, right? So down the road, I, we would like to probably talk to you guys about setting up some sort of grant program, that the deficiency of the list, we're going to know in front of which houses have sidewalk problems, and we're going to have a rating of what are the most important. We're probably going to be sitting and be proactive and get to these people and get them letters. And, and council's going to need to make a decision though, is that fully the city's responsibility, which I don't think we have enough resources to go do all those, or is part of the project going to be put on the homeowner moving forward? Some cities say homeowner, homeowner go do it, and they make them do it. Those homeowners aren't happy, because it wasn't anything they planned, you know? The city comes along and gives you a letter saying your sidewalk's lifted, you know, you got to fix it. City of Beaverton in Oregon did that to a bunch of people, it wasn't super popular. So what I did when I was with Newburgh is we actually set aside thirty thousand dollars, and we had a grant process. So we sent letters out saying, hey, when you get a chance, your sidewalk needs to be repaired. We also have a grant program every year, and we'll pay up to fifty percent of those costs. You need to give us three codes, and then once it's completed, we'll give you half of the project cost. And that worked out pretty darn good, that we got good compliance from people, because we were buying into the problem. Quite a bit of paperwork, but it worked out good. The thirty thousand dollars went really fast every year or two, but we were getting the sidewalks done. Some people would say, you know, I wanted to take care of it anyways, you don't need to, thank you for notifying me, I'm not going to use the grant, I'm just going to go take care of it. Because the grants got exhausted pretty quick. So anyways, that could be another option in the future that we can consider.
Questions, discussion, comments?
I'll definitely have questions and comments down the road, we'll talk about that again. I think I had concerns about that when we talked about it in the past.
Understood.
Yeah, there's no right answer.
We're not the only city facing this.
Two thousand bucks a month, social security, and their house is paid for, and them having to come up with twenty thousand dollars to fix the sidewalk. We're going to, I'll, I'll definitely have questions and comments down the road, we'll talk about that again. But that, no, the plan itself, I think we, you know, thank you for the work, and let's get on the plan, get that stuff done.
I wanted to look at railroad avenue as an example. The street is a lot more walkable, it's a lot safer, people can see you. My dog is now a senior dog, and I have got to have a little trailer to bring around and put her on there and use the ramps to pull her along when she can't make it home. And I see this as an opportunity to make sure that everyone has access to the whole city. And as scary as it is, and expensive as it is, it's needed, it's way safer, it creates a better quality of life for, for everyone, especially seniors. And if that's the kind of society where we can include everybody, that's what I want to do, and if it costs me a little more as a homeowner, I'm okay with that, but I'm probably in the minority. Just wanted to let you know that I appreciate this as an opportunity to make our city better, to think about, those of us who are typically able to think about people who are differently abled, and that there are so many of us that need help getting around, especially if we don't have access to a car. But this is super important for, for those folks, especially who are higher in age and lower in income. So this is a very, to me, it's something that we need to look at and make sure that we have funding for it, that everyone, every citizen, every person in our community has an opportunity to make sure that they're able to access everything that a city has to offer, including our parks, our restaurants downtown, and just being able to take a walk with somebody and your dog down the street. So thank you so much for your work, and I, I'm sure we'll all have lots of answers for this in the future.
I just want to say thank you. I'm really happy to see the work you're doing on this. I look forward to the improvements.
No questions? Melissa, George? Deputy Mayor, do you have any comments or questions?
She left.
Oh.
No one had a question.
She was just there. I just saw her a minute ago. Okay. So no other comments or questions for staff? All right, well, thank you, gentlemen. Does council have any items for discussion? I kind of like to ask, again, if we're, if we look at porta potties for downtown in a few locations, if they're interested in that. I mean, we have one across over here, it seems to be working out, people are using it. I heard that there's still a toilet paper out of there, but I'd like to see if we can get maybe one out by the Brewer Park area, by the square, and maybe stop some of this going to the restroom in the street and on sidewalks and everywhere else. I mean, they did this program before in the past, SPAT program. I forget what's that stand for?
It was the Poverty Task Force, I'm sorry.
I can't remember what it stands for. But, but it did show that it did reduce, it did reduce people using or streets as bathrooms. There were some misuse, I think location, 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 we need to put them in bright, bright lighted areas where, you know, or cops can drive by and see them or whatever. Not in some little corner somewhere, but, you know, if people don't have a place to go to the restroom, they're going to keep doing, using the street, and frankly, I don't want to step in it. So I don't know if council's got some desire, we're in budget, it probably costs us about three thousand bucks a year for two more. What are we paying, about a hundred bucks a month for that? So about another couple thousand bucks a year for two more at least. And then also down the road, we should look at making nonprofits that provide services also pay for their own porta potty. I mean, Give Me a Lifeline should have a porta potty outside. They have food service, they've got people waiting in line to get food, they should have, they should be required to have a porta potty out there, in my opinion, so. But I just wanted to know if council had any desire to move to, see if staff can get some prices on porta potties, at least a couple more, so we can maybe see, just maybe just try it out and see if it's, if it's working, and other than that, we can't, you know, what are we going to do? People need to go to the bathroom. So, George, you got any thoughts on that?
So I would be opposed to what you need to, where we can successfully put them. Because we have had nightmare scenarios with those previously. Show off at work in the morning, and I got to see some of the nightmare scenarios that happened, one guy got on fire, you know, it was so destroyed that, you know, they knocked it over, they ran it over. But, you know, there's only some, but it wasn't all the time, but, you know, it did happen enough that they removed it before, so. I would love to see, like, we have very high visibility, a place that, you know, maybe the place to drive by, not in the middle of the park, but like on the corner, a little up a corner, and it was there, and something that we could have people to check on, is one that we had there previously, I didn't hear, you could come out, and I don't want to read them that if we could avoid that part. So we could look into where they would go and how it would be, you know, real visible and real, you know, something that everyone could get behind, and we'd be able to hear more about it.
Cool. Melissa?
I think it's worth the conversation.
I'm definitely open to it.
I agree, I'm open.
Very open, especially with someone with gastrointestinal problems. It's really important that people don't have to run into a store and buy something before they need to go to the restroom. So I think it's very important that we have public facilities.
The, the current provider of the porta potty over here in the parking lot, actually doesn't charge the insurance, they use their old models, for instance, like this, and they basically are near their end of life, and so they just consider that to be the case. Previously, when the Poverty Task Force and their, what is it called, I think it was a test project or whatever, replaced those. Some of the providers at that time were concerned about activity in there, the destruction of facilities, and we'd have to pay to replace those or pay an additional fee monthly for insurance. And then the, some of the illegal activity that might have been taking place in those at the same time, whether they were usable, you know, what, what are the frequencies of service? So those are things that led to them being removed. Previously, we've had some good luck over here, frankly, it's a well, fairly well built area near the police department. It serves multiple functions, not just downtown, the parking lot, and Lincoln Court Gym, so, or Court, Lincoln Court. So, yeah, certainly we can come up with a couple ideas as far as placement and exact costs, so council can consider what the options are there, yeah?
We also have the holidays coming on, so people visiting downtown, and then during the summers, we have the farmer's market. So I think it's important for us to have public facilities for those events.
Sounds good. Any other items for discussion?
Cutty Street, Mark, you know, I talked about this a little bit, the painting along the sidewalk there, there was no, no longer parking, that used to be, that people kind of tend to keep working on.
Yeah. You'll see that we put the electronic message boards out yesterday, it said angle parking only at both ends, to further reinforce that there's no parallel parking anymore. We have a tough time performing painting this time of year, obviously. I know the public horse crews are also working on putting some reflectors and delineators at the center lines as well as the fog lines, better align people, especially when the weather's like this, into those lanes. So we're going to, we're going to put those measures into it right now, also look at some additional signage about parking, hopefully further informed.
We could put up some no parking signs on some parades, they're more temporary, if we keep having parking problems, to remind people that, hey, this is an active lane now, you have to stop, get out of your car and walk off, so.
I think the immediate plan is to continue to reinforce the changes, because we certainly can't repaint right now. It's time of year, it's either wet or it's too cold. So by reinforcing the, you know, the lane, the reconveying of the lanes and the parking with some delineation, some additional signage, and continue to communicate that, that's our best measure right now, communicating that, and then if the council, you know, we get to springtime or getting close to painting time, then reassess where we're-
About May, May, we probably about the first month, we can start painting out there. We'll be doing the long line striping through the whole city. Usually that's about in early July, late June sort of thing, so that's where it wants to-
Depending on the state, yeah. They canceled on us twice this year.
Yeah, so, and I don't know about, we have a new contract we got to get into with them. Yeah, well, that's probably going to go into council also. So anyways, there's some moving parts on striking for next year.
We'll show you some pictures of, of some of these measures, please, when you get off out of here tonight, again, there's electronic message board right here at six, and another one down at first, to hopefully reinforce that.
So those pavement reflectors, you know, yellow on both sides to, you know, both ways. We have some of them in, in stock at the shop, but we put in an order for some more of them, so you probably won't see those until next week. The goal is to get some down this week, and then we have a bunch of them coming in so we can finish up.
Those will also be not only visual, but obviously if your wheel hits one of those because they're raised, it'll also indicate, you know, that you've, you're at your lane or potentially at your lane, and it's something, and hopefully draw attention as well.
Also, P U D replaced a lot of lights on railroad at their expense today, so check out, the lights are quite a bit brighter. I'm sure that Jay would like your feedback, Rob, on it.
Yeah, we, we talked about this in briefings over the past several months, P U D finally got to replacing, though, those are P U D poles. They own them, they maintain them, they're replacing the light fixtures early, before end of life to create a brighter environment, safer environment downtown. It's going to be a change. As you know, change brings comment, but we're hoping that, again, the intent here is that it's a safer environment for pedestrians and our, and our folks that are, you know, utilizing vehicles down the road.
So the roadway heads were sort of old pennant style, they're sort of bald, and they went to what they call the cobra head. It's, it's black, they looked pretty good during the day.
It's pretty bright, I drove down, I'm going to walk down after this and check it out on foot.
But they can maintain those, these are parts that they have for the, other than the black, they don't usually do black, but they have parts, because this is a standard thing that they have in stock all the time, so it helps them be able to maintain them much better for us.
Our streets are definitely dark, so I am, I'm excited to go down and see what it's like on foot, so.
The color temperature also went up some, they went to four thousand degree Kelvin, and the older lights were sub three thousand degree Kelvin. So what it is, is a soft yellow light before, it should be a little brighter, whiter, that you should be able to see things better.
That works, all right. Any other questions, comments?
Railroad Avenue is one of the prettiest streets in the world during December, so I hope everyone gets out and takes a walk on it and brings their loved ones. It's one of the few things that makes me happy in the world is to go walk down railroad during Christmas time. So I invite everyone to come on down and make sure that you, you know, take advantage of all the great restaurants that are downtown, and make sure you go say hi to the dog, the dog walking area over at Neyland Park. So, so many beautiful things that we can, that are close by and walkable, that I want to make sure that everyone knows Shelton is open for business, and come on down, this is Christmas Town USA. Here we go, Merry Christmas.
That's it. Thanks, everybody. The study session is adjourned at six forty-seven P M.
Recording stopped.